Village Council Meeting, Monday, November 29, 2021, at 6:30 PM. This is as a result of the cancellation or the adjournment of the November 22 meeting due to lack of quorum. We'll call the meeting to order, and if you could rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll call, Mr. Young, and determination of quorum?
Yes, Councilmember Hobbs.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Luxinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matheson.
Here.
President Pro Tem Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Teresa Rut, just on her way. President Van Portfeet is excused, but we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number four, statement for the purpose of the meeting. The purpose of the special meeting is a rescheduled meeting from November 22, 2021, canceled due to a lack of quorum. Presentations, we had a presentation this evening, but our DDA Director Molly Lalonne was unable to attend, and I think it's consensus of council and manager to adjourn that presentation until it's the next meeting.
I actually wanted to make a couple of comments on the presentation that was submitted in my packet, if it's possible.
Go ahead, Mr. Young.
Okay. The first comment is, there's too many pages in my packet of colored, expensive colored stuff that could have been presented. The entire presentation could have been presented on two eight and a half by 11 sheets of paper.
Could you speak into the microphone a little better, please?
The entire presentation could have been, it's the same problem I have with McKenna, the entire presentation could have been submitted on two eight and a half by 11 sheets of paper. I'm not sure what the presentation is supposed to be presenting. There are many things in the presentation that look like things that the DDA has done, but they're really not. They're a report on things that have occurred in the main downtown area and not as a consequence of the DDA. That's all I have to say on that particular report.
All right, thank you. And of course, the purpose of the annual presentation is the state requires that the DDA hold two informal meetings annually, so it is a state requirement that those meetings be held, and the purpose of that, of course, is to inform the public of the goals and direction of the authority, including projects to be undertaking. So we can still make that with the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Call to the public, if there's anyone from the public. I don't know if any letters have come in, Mr. Young, on a non-agenda item. If none, we'll close the call to the public. Consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are approved by one vote. I will read the items to be considered on the consent agenda. Number one, approval of permit and license agreement for 2022 Rotary Ice Cup Challenge Event. Number two, Semcog Annual Membership Renewal, 2021-2022. Item three, schedule the CDBG PY 2022 Public Hearing. Item four, schedule public hearing on proposed ordinance number 26-104, Planned Unit Development PUD text amendments. Item five, schedule public hearing for 141 Elizabeth Street Department's Preliminary PUD Plan. Item six, adopt resolution setting 2022 Village Council Meeting Schedule. Item seven, DDA Executive Director Report, October 2021. Item eight, approval of Village Council Regular Meeting Minutes, November 8, 2021. Item nine, Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, October 4, 2021. Item 10, Planning Commission Draft Regular Meeting Minutes, November 1, 2021. Item 11, Downtown Development Authority Regular Meeting Minutes, November 12, 2021. Item 12, Downtown Development Authority Special Meeting Minutes, October 28, 2021. And item 13, Police Department Reports, October. And we have a motion?
Yeah, I move to, I asked to remove items seven, eight, and 11 from the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay, if we can get a motion to support?
Support.
All in favor?
Teresa's, oh, Sarah, okay, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we'll move item seven to number nine, agenda items for consideration. Let's make item seven A. Item eight will be B. Item C will be 11. Financial matters will be item D and either items E. Mr. Lamb?
Do you want a roll call on consent or all ayes with the motion?
We get a motion for the agenda as amended?
Move to, move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support?
Oh, excuse me, there was one issue that Joe was supposed to bring up, the invoice, register, and bill approval, the portion of that in the agenda, I'm sorry, it's an agenda item. The DDA, at one of the previous meetings, we agreed that the DDA bills, we would not be approving them as part of our agenda, we would only be receiving and filing them, and Joe forgot, has included them in this section of the agenda. Would you like to address that?
Well, and I just wanted to make sure, I think the discussion on that, was that exactly, but whether or not that the council is required?
We just receive and file it, and that's further on in the agenda. Right now, we're on consent agenda.
Okay, so it's not a part of the agenda?
Not, right now, we pulled items off the agenda, made a motion to approve, now we need to prove the consent agenda as amended, and Doug made a motion, and I didn't catch who made second? Anyone?
Second.
Mike, Councilmember Lamb?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second for the approval of the agenda as amended. Everyone in support, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, number nine, agenda items for consideration, A.
We got to, we got to, we just approved the consent agenda, now we need to approve the regular agenda.
That was a motion to approve the agenda, the, Mr. Lamb's motion was to approve the consent agenda after pulling the three.
I'm sorry, so, okay, so it was the amended agenda, I got it.
And now the approval of the agenda is complete, item nine.
Right.
A will be item seven, DDA Executive Director Report, October 21, Mr. Lamb.
I'm sorry, I didn't write those down, which one is up, seven?
Seven.
The DDA Director's report?
Correct.
I would, I would like to move to send this report back to the DDA Director so they could write something professional and factual. I can't understand any of it. It's a bunch of pictures with miscellaneous things written on the pages, and it lacks any, any semblance of a sophisticated report, and like I said, I moved to send this back for revision with the recommendation that they seek a, you know, professional writing class or just some direction that they provide a report to, to report instead of a photographic essay of the citizens of the council.
Mr. Young, if I'm not mistaken, these are put together and they're presented at the DDA meetings where she runs through them and offers more explanation, right? And then they're provided as a courtesy, more for us to see what the DDA's report is. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, it's the receive and file.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if what you would like then would be something different, because this she puts together for the DDA Board and she runs through it at the DDA meetings. So I'm wondering if, you know, the motion to receive and file can stand, but then that you would make a request that the council gets a little bit more detailed report from the DDA Director, since this is something that she's already presented, we're just receiving it as a courtesy, but you could put in a request that says, I would like this with more explanation?
Was this a DDA Director's report to the Village Council of Lake Orion?
It was to the board, DDA Board.
Okay, it says, "DDA Executive Director's Report," and it's on the Village Council agenda, so is it a report to the Village Council by the DDA Director?
It's a report from the DDA Director to the DDA Board, and they send it to us just so we can see.
So would that be sufficient for Councilmember Lamb to have a more detailed narrative as to what that presentation entailed to the Board and have that included when we get these as opposed to receive and file?
Yeah, I would like, Mr. Young, to clarify what the reporting requirements of the Downtown Development Authority are to the Village of Lake Orion Board, and that being said, we could address this at another meeting, and this, I can move to receive and file this under those conditions.
Yeah, I agree, because the annual report from the DDA Board is very, it's lacking. If this is what, if the annual report is what we're supposed to be getting as a detailed information of what's going on with the DDA, that, that's falling short dramatically. And then the, do we get these monthly reports? These are just pictures, pretty much, of the, so we need to know what the reporting requirements are.
So would it be fair, if I'm saying Mr. Lamb's motion correct, that for the purpose of this evening's item, we would receive and file with the provizio that further?
Mr. Young, clarify the reporting requirements, and my comment was strictly that I would like to see a better.
And that's in the form of a motion and support?
I'll support.
Motion made, support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Item number B, formerly item number eight, approval of Village Council Regular Meeting Minutes, November 8, 2021, Mr. Lamb?
I move to, I move that we approve these minutes subject to the following corrections. On packet page 65, item nine, resolved to not confirm President Portfleet's reappointment of Debbie Burgess was my motion, the part, as a person with property interest in the DDA Board should be struck, I did not say that. That would be the first item.
And this is on packet page 65?
65, yep, 9A, and it was a resolution that failed, but I just said to not confirm President Van Portle's reappointment. The second item is, this must be a typo, because it says that we unanimously did not approve Mr. Laurent's appointment to the Board, but I believe we unanimously?
Adopted, yes.
Yeah, it says failed, failed unanimously.
Should be adopted unanimous.
Okay, so that correction would be on packet page 66, the second actual line result, it should say?
Adopted.
Adopted. Then I, and then, Joe, you, okay, so that would be the two corrections I asked that you include in the motion.
Are those sufficient, Mr. Young, or do we need a motion on that?
Well, I need a motion to, well, I've got a motion, I need to see the second, I think.
I do.
I'm sorry, Sarah, okay.
That's Teresa.
Motion and support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? The next item will be item C, which was formerly item 11, Downtown Development Authority Regular Meeting Minutes, November 12, 2021, Mr. Lamb?
What page is that on, Joe? Okay, that was 86?
I don't think it's on there.
Yes. Do you say, "DDA Regular Minutes, October 12?"
There's, there's two.
Oh, there's two.
Oh, you're right.
Where's the November 12?
November 12 is on packet page 86, and that was item 11.
Well, it's got the wrong heading on it.
But they say October 12.
The numbering is messed up, was one reason I, I wanted to point out the numbering on the, okay.
So we need...
What page is that, Joe, 11?
Well, it's because it says November on the cover, but it's actually October 12th minutes.
Yeah.
That's the problem. So we need to correct that to show...
I think that's why I, I'm sorry, I think that's why I included that, was for that reason. I didn't write it down on the cover, so please excuse me. If I move to accept and file the Downtown Development Authority Regular Meetings, November 12, 20?
It'd be October 12.
October, okay, so that should be October 12, then.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a support?
Support.
Teresa? Sorry.
Who moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no?
I said aye, I forgot. Aye.
Okay, moving on to financial matters, item one, invoice, register, and bill approval, Mr. Young?
Yes, Council, we have this evening, bills paid November 9 in the amount of $21,688.57, and on November 10, the amount of $5,059.56, and invoice registered dated November 18 in the amount of $78,761.48.
What page does that start on, Joe?
122.
Yeah, we get a motion and support.
I will approve the bills paid November 9, 2021, in the amount of $21,688.57, November 10, in the amount of $5,059.56, and November 18, 2021, invoice register report in the amount of $78,761.48.
Support? I would like to discuss.
And then discussion, if we get support, and then we'll discuss.
I support.
Support, Liam, and discussion.
Okay.
As previously discussed, we were going to not formally approve the Downtown Development Authority expenses.
Right.
We're not, it's not our authority, and so those are going to be, the motion should include, if, the motion should include and to receive and file the Downtown Development Authority expenditure report?
Their bills, it's to receive and file the DDA bill report, so to prove the bills paid and to receive and file the DDA bills.
Would...
I meant my motion to reflect that.
Okay, Mr. Matheson will amend his motion to reflect receive and file of DDA reports, and I'm pretty positive the support would as well.
I will, I will put my support to that also, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Do you want to do a roll call?
Roll call?
Councilmember Hobbs.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Luxinger.
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson.
Yes.
Council President Pro Tem Nash.
Yes.
Councilmember Rut.
Yes.
Passed unanimously on a roll call, okay.
Item passed. Item two, financial reports, October 2021, Mr. Young?
Yes, Council, we have our October 31 financial report, and then we have a couple updates for you. One, most importantly, is that the census will be taking effect, we found out, starting in February, but it'll be retroactive to last October, and unfortunately, our population went down by 3%, it went down from 29.56 to 29.87, for some reason, we don't understand why, because Semcog has this, it's projected to 3,189, and that's upon which we received our ARP money, American Rescue Plan money, which we aren't going to lose that, that stays, and they are, the state is trying to not make it retroactive, so, but we'll see what happens with that, but it is a decrease both in our sales tax and our gas and weight tax in the $10,000 range, one little more once we get their final implementation date. We did have, on the good side, though, our pension funds that we contribute based on salary for most of our employees, that's called a defined contribution, in order to vest, you have to be here six years. Well, over the years, we've had several employees come and go that did invest, and there was this called forfeiture funds that are sitting in our account that we can now apply and use towards current year contributions, so it'll help this year's budget. It's approximately $40,000, and it just affects those employees that are on the defined contribution, not the defined benefit under the MERS program. So I wanted to mention that. The other thing is, we will be getting our annual audit at the next council meeting, December 12, council meeting, it's set at 13, but it's the 12, for presentation for the audit, so.
Okay, and do you know if the reason, I was curious when I read this, you know, people are hesitant to complete anything that comes to them, you know, from the federal government, and unfortunately, the census is just that, it provides funds back to the village, and do we know what percent complete the village was in the last census?
How many responded, do you mean?
Yes.
To the survey, I can find out.
Yeah, and I say that because, you know, people need to know that failure to answer a census harms the community, it just takes money away, and that's all it is, is a tool. Obviously, it's used for different tools, but for our community, it affects us negatively, so I'm sad to hear that.
And the township received a decrease also.
Right, and I'd be curious to see if...
I'll have to double check that.
What our compliance percentage was, and how, if they have a way to rectify that, what we can do.
I will check into that, I know they do follow up.
I'd hate to wait 10 years for a loss of funding if there's a way to, to rectify that, thank you. Is this a receive and file?
I move to receive and file financial report.
Oh.
So, Joe, so what this says in summary is that due to the census, we're going to lose $17,656 every year in revenue. The other statement is, we're going to receive a one-time rich refund of $45,000 from the pension funds that were not used. Is there any estimate of, if any of this revenue will be recovered from the proposed tax abatements for the new development project? Are we going to, are we going to gain any income from the new projects in the next 10 year if we grant them tax? 10-year if we grant the tax payments?
Not if we abate the tax, there won't be.
Okay, so if we get these new, all these new projects, I want to tax base some tax abatements, we're not going to get any revenue from them.
Not additional revenue.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to be just keep losing money, right?
In a sense, we're not getting money. We're going to still be getting on the land, but not the building. Correct.
That's what I.
But on the land, not the building.
Correct.
Now, is that five years or 10 years?
It's up to the council. It can go up to 10 years.
Okay, was there a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to receive and file. The report's for October 31st.
Support. Motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion passed. Other items, E, playground equipment purchase with DDA funds. Mr. Young.
Yes, council, the downtown, well, the Parks and Rec Committee approached the DDA for funding of a playground equipment, and the board approved it in the amount of $78,210. This would be a community build. Councilmember Teresa Rutt can speak more specifically to the items, but tonight would be approving the contract and the funding by the DDA and the corresponding budget amendment that we can go ahead and get the equipment ordered. It will be a community build, and they are seeking additional funds for that, as well as the children, a Greens Park project, as you recall, where we got the T-Mobile grant for 50,000. And there's going to be costs and a number of volunteers needed to help with that. We do get a supervisor on both these projects, but I'll turn it over to Teresa if you'd like to.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so the Parks and Rec Committee approached the DDA. We made a presentation to the DDA back in July, just overall vision for the project. And then we got the grant from T-Mobile. And so we reapproached the DDA board and asked if they would contribute to the purchasing of the playground equipment for Children's Park, largely because, I mean, it is kind of the centerpiece of downtown. It's heavily used. It's used for DDA events. And they approved the purchase of the equipment for the park. So still associated costs that the village will end up having to take care of, like the playground safety surfacing, so bringing in more mulch, DPW hours, as they'll be removing the old equipment and putting the new in. But really exciting that they are, that they've agreed to fund the equipment purchase. So the total equipment purchase is $78,000, so that's a significant amount. And just really excited about new equipment for kids to play in since the current equipment is deteriorating. We've also been looking, the Parks Committee and Mr. Young put it out for bid for the pavilion for Greens Park. We're still looking at some of the numbers and the options for that, so that will probably be something that comes up soon as well. So the Parks Committee has some money allocated towards that. But tonight, we're asking you to, yeah, approve the purchase with the DDA funds for the equipment for Children's Park.
That's actually really excellent news. I mean, our parks have, just in the last year, with the additional funding and the work of the Parks Committee has just been phenomenal. They've needed a lot of love, a lot of funding, a lot of care. There's always been really good design and intent, but the funding for our parks is just so low. And this help from the DDA, I think it's valid. It's infrastructure, and it allows us to seek funding from other groups for other projects in the village by reaching out to the DDA. And I think it was a perfect move, and I think it's great for the parks. I'm looking forward to the improvement. I had one question, though. I've talked to a couple of people. And when I was down at Children's Park about a week ago, and I had a couple of people ask me, there's a lot of play parks are moving towards the rubber matting as opposed to the chips. I think it's less that the DPW would have to worry about with mowing and snow and things. Is that something?
So it is on our radar. And to be honest, the first place we'd put that is probably Greens Park, because we're looking at sand surfacing right now with the beach and everything, but sand is not an ADA acceptable playground surfacing. So the pour-in-place rubber surfacing is about $25 a square foot, so we're looking for Greens Park somewhere. The first, I've gotten one quote, and it was around $40,000 for Greens Park, for the playground there, to do safety surfacing. So Children's Park's the bigger park. It's going to be a lot more than that. The nice thing, so the rubber mulch that we have or wood chips, you know, the engineered wood fiber, both of them are ADA surfacing, so it is ADA acceptable, lower end of the ADA approved. So it's something we would love to do. You know, there's that small patch at the bottom of the red slide, but it's quite costly to do so. So for now, like I said, the first priority to do pour-in-place rubber surfacing would be over at Greens Park. And then after that, you know, it's something we'd love to do, but.
Well, good, yeah. And that was the comment. It's more of a safety surface for children. So I'm glad that the parks are looking at that. I'm hearing comments about it as well. So any other discussion? Looking for a motion?
As we, I think we're supposed to have a motion before discussion, but since we're having discussion for motion, may I have some discussion?
Or do we want to make a motion and then have discussion? I think Councilmember Rutt was actually delivering the message.
Yeah, I can make a motion real quick if you want.
Yeah, because I just have a couple of comments.
Yeah, so I'll move to approve the purchase of playground equipment from PenSure Landscape Structures in the amount not to exceed $78,000. $7.71 is requested by the Parks and Rec Board and funded by the DDA Board to approve the community build supervision from PenSure not to exceed 2,000 and authorize the village manager to sign the contract subject to review by the village attorney. And further resolved to approve the budget amendment as presented to be incorporated in the minutes and finally resolved to express thanks to the DDA Board for the $78,210 funds for Children's Park improvements.
Support. Been moved and supported. Discussion.
I would like to say, I'd like to say it's about time the DDA coughed up some of the money, especially since they've been collecting tax dollars from the residential portions of their district that haven't benefited at all from the DDA since 1985. So I would consider it just a tiny installment to our community from the Downtown Development Authority for their excessive captured district. Yeah, I think it's great. I, I'm going to continue to pressure the DDA to cough up some more money, and I think Mr. Young is getting ready to present them with a very large bill soon.
Yes.
Yes, and so it's exciting to see some of that DDA money come back.
Any other comments? Discussion? Does this be a roll call?
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Luxinger.
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson.
Yes.
President Protem Narsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Rutt.
Yes.
Councilmember Hobbs.
Yes.
Thank you.
And item E, number two, Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update Proposal. Mr. Young.
Yes, council, we have an update, a five-year update due on our Parks and Rec Master Plan. It expires in February, and part of the process is, of course, updating it for any changes that we'd like to have the plan be considered. I know Councilmember Rutt has reviewed it, and Council President Ben Portman has reviewed it for comments and welcome anyone's comments. There will be a 30-day public comment period, which will start this week and go through January to be ready for a public hearing and adoption of the plan in January. In order to help us put this project, this report together, we hired, proposing to hire McKenna Associates, who drafted the last contract four or five years ago. Their proposal is a fee to not exceed $9,700. The biggest component we need from them is the demographics information, some of the charts and tables that might be, need to be updated. So tonight, I'm just asking your approval to enter the contract with McKenna in the amount not to exceed $9,700, subject to review by the village attorney. We do have this money in our budget, so.
Look for a motion.
And we need the grant in order to be able for, most state and federal grants require us to have a current Parks and Rec Master Plan.
And this is a five-year requirement, and we're at that point.
Yes.
So it's required. So I'd be looking for a motion?
Move to approve the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update Proposal from McKenna in the amount not to exceed $9,700 and authorize the village manager to sign the contract subject to review by the village attorney.
Support.
Discussion. Mr. Lamb.
As always, do we have any requirements to bid these services out for this level project?
I, I did get a bid of $19,500 from Beckett Raider. Gibson Webster did not want to, did not bid. So there were limited, a number of bids I got, and the one was.
So my question was, are we required to bid this out?
It's a professional service. You don't have to, but we do, we do go get and solicit proposals.
Okay, so you're representing that you solicited proposals, and this was the cheapest one, and it just so happened to be our existing planner who did the last report.
And I'm hoping to come in significantly less than that based on our input and involvement with this project.
Yeah, I would say, I've already gone through and marked it up and sent it to Manager Young, too, with what's been completed or will be completed on the current one, things that the Parks and Rec Committee has discussed. I know Council President Ben Portman has also done that. So if you guys have comments on that, you can send them to me and Mr. Young, and we'll make sure to get that. So, yeah, I just went through and marked up the whole plan, and hopefully that will help expedite some, make it a little bit easier for McKenna to make some of the updates as well.
And the main thing is the plan needs to contain the items we would like to see in the future. So that's the main reason for having it.
Because a number, yeah, as I say, a number of the grants, like the one that comes, came out from Oakland County that's due in January, if you're applying for a grant from them, that the item that you're requesting or what you're requesting funds for has to be in your current master plan. So you can't just, oh, hey, I'm going to dream up something else and request that. So items that you're requesting, especially like federal or state grants, have to be in your master plan.
Like, like a lighted waterfall in the park would not be eligible unless it was listed in the report, for example.
And as you stated earlier, based on some of the work of Councilmember Rutt and the committee, the Parks Committee, that there may, it actually may come in under $9,700. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just will point out one more thing with the selection of McKenna. They have a tendency to be verbose. They pad their reports with excessive amounts of photographs and white space, and so I find the documents difficult to read and difficult to understand. And so previously in the past, we've asked them to make corrections to this approach, because they should be read. Someone should read them, not just look at the picture.
And I believe Mr. Young is making notes to that effect.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. We have support. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Luxinger?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narsch?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item E3, retaining wall replacement, Park Avenue. Mr. Young.
Yes, council, at the end of Park Avenue, we have a retaining wall, wood rafter retaining wall that has been brought to our attention, is leaking in between the rafters because the storm drainage system is not functioning like it should. And we've had contractors come out and look at and get this pricing, but because of the layout of it, you need to do an engineered study to make sure what we're proposing will meet the engineering standards rather than just replace a wooden wall that's deteriorating. We need to make sure what's necessary from a geotechnical standpoint, some soil borings and also the drainage. So we're asking this evening for the engineering contract with Noack and Frous in the amount not to exceed $12,950 for that engineering work, which we could then, from that, go out and get bids that would meet the necessary standards. We did solicit proposals. There's copies in the bid in here. We, as I said, we did get quotes from contractors, but after looking at it closer, we determined that we just couldn't remove the wall and put it back. We needed more in-depth civil engineering, particularly with the drainage. Because the video, I never saw the video, but the water is draining through the law, the boards, and it shouldn't be doing that, which, and it was, the true rating on the ends, so it definitely needs to be replaced. It was, my understanding, it was put in years ago, the village participated along with the property owners, was what I was told. But, and there is a cost sharing. The property owner to the west said, I would like to replace my driveway, and as part of this, I will pay for that. And we will be putting together an agreement to that effect to bring back to council to that point once we get the plans and applications put together.
So would it be fair to say that the total project estimate is probably going to be different than 50,000, because that was based on the wall replacement, not based on the findings of the engineering study that we haven't completed yet?
Well, that 50 included the 12,000.
Right, but if the engines, if the engineering findings come back that we have to make additional changes, that would change, we would have to rebid.
Oh, right.
The scope of work.
Yeah, right. Well, we're going to rebid no matter, because.
Okay.
Because the firms would put the wall in, but they wouldn't do the restoration, for example.
Right, but.
So we don't, we don't want to have who did what.
I guess what I'm getting at is should we have a total project estimate of $50,000 if we don't know what the total project estimate at this time is?
Well, I had three bids on the walls.
Was that just the wall replacement?
Yeah, just the wall, not restoration of the pavement.
Okay, but if the engineering study that we're paying for in this motion comes back and says we have to make additional changes, we would have to have an additional motion if it was beyond the 50,000?
This, this motion, it was just to award the contractor, Noack and Frous, to design the wall to go out to bed. The motion is just for 12,150.
They're going to.
It's on the back of page 242.
They're going to prepare the scope of work, Joe, and you're, you're going to then send that out for bids.
Correct.
And then we'll receive the bids.
Correct.
And all the apples and oranges on each bid sheet will look the same.
Yes. That's the goal. Yes.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Can I ask one more question, Joe? So I think Jerry's question was the total project estimate of local street. Did you create the, did you come up with the $50,000 number?
Well, based on the 12 plus the bids we got.
Okay, so you just.
This is a ballpark.
That's your ballpark?
Yeah.
Village manager's ballpark estimate?
Right, yeah.
Nothing formal?
No, 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 no.
Just to put us in a, okay.
Yeah, just to give you some magnitude of the project.
Under 100, okay.
I'll move to approve the design engineering contract, the Park Avenue retaining wall replacement to Noack and Frous engineers in a amount not to exceed 12,150 and authorize the village manager to sign the contract subject to review by the village attorney.
Support. Motion and support. Roll call. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Young.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narsch?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Luxinger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed. Item 10, call to the public. Mr. Newell, you're it. If anyone has, nope, we'll close. Call to the public.
They have new offices now, so. I just wanted to comment that I want everyone to be cautious with the COVID. We have had an employee today come down with it, unfortunately, but he's, he's being cared for and didn't expose us. He wasn't around, and we sanitized everything, including this room. So be sensitive out there to that. We are down to a low crew on the DPW, so if it snows, which is supposed to be starting it right now, I believe, we'll have to figure out where we can call upon some people or contractors to help us, depending on much we get. Because right now, Wes can come in and drive, but he can't, somebody's healthy enough. The one other employee is recovering from surgery, so the, the family that's all in COVID.
Your comment about Wes coming in to drive, I would run that by the attorney, because there might be some liability issues if he came in to work with COVID.
Right.
And Chris? I wouldn't recommend that for a lot of reasons. One, the vehicle is now contaminated. It'd have to be decontaminated.
Oh, yeah.
Before it could use again, if he had to stop for fuel, if there was any public, I think it best.
There would be liability, and the village would be responsible for that.
That we, if we, it's required, if we look at emergency contractor, that.
Right.
That we do. I think that's totally within the purview of the manager to.
Right. The only, the other thing I wanted to mention was that I didn't realize that even though this is remake of a regular meeting, it's a special meeting, and we can't add items in a special meeting. Because I was going to add the bids for the asphalt and paving. We, because some of them. Because I was going to add the bids for the asphalt and paving, we, because some of them still could do the work this year, some have their own asphalt plans, and some did say they would hold the bids for next year. So I could, we could either wait till December, the next council meeting, or consider having a special council meeting.
Can it wait till the next council meeting, or is it?
It can, it's just that, the sooner we get it approved, the sooner they can do whatever the, whether we'll allow them now.
Can we have a one-item meeting?
Pardon?
Can we have a one agenda item meeting?
Yes.
The, Joe's concern is that this time of year, the asphalt plants are closing, and, you know, last minute Charlie, we have three streets that have issues that should be, the snowplows are gonna destroy the streets completely if they don't patch them, and then, they had a lot of manholes that are sticking up that are gonna get nailed by the snowplows. Why this wasn't taken care of this summer, I don't know. What, is it gonna be a big impact to us, Joe, if we don't do this work this year?
No, it's not gonna impact if we don't use it.
Is it gonna inconvenience me as a, as a resident driving down my street, which is one of the three streets that is horribly degraded, that they didn't repair this summer?
And the bids for paving, some were good for next year.
Are they still able to pave this year?
They could.
It's my understanding the pavement plants have all closed.
But one firm has its own plant, and said that he, they can make asphalt through the year.
Is it advisable to put asphalt down this time?
Well, they, one firm has what they call this infrared treatment, where they heat the asphalt up, and it sticks and holds together well, so it is, it is an option.
Do we still have the ability of our DPW to do patch?
Yeah, we have the hot box, and do, we do do potholes, but these are the magnitude that
These are beyond that.
I mean, there's 60 of them, and they're three by, you got a saw cut, and you gotta dig them up, and then you gotta put them back on, and right now, our, our staff is not able to do that, because we're
We don't have any information, Joe, what was the dollar amount you were looking for for this?
Well, I, I wanna be careful, because it's not an agenda item, and we can't add to the meeting.
Yeah, we don't need deliberation, just what they
But what, what we should do is consider, if we want to do it at this time, a motion to have a special meeting, and we could do that, and I would offer this alternative. And I know it's not a popular one, and it's not one that I'm particularly in favor of. However, COVID is increasing, we're seeing it, the, the numbers are rapidly increasing everywhere, and I'm going to suggest that we look at the December meeting, we only have one meeting in December, and we have, if this special meeting, that we do that in a Zoom format. It may make it easier on some other members for an emergency meeting, but I, I wanna consider that for the next meeting, and I'm basing that on some phone calls to Homeland Security today, and official, and the fire capacity of Homeland Security. And the numbers are rising, we just, we see that today, it's within our own community, and it's kind of alarming, the rapid increase in numbers. So I think out of an overabundance of caution for the community, that we consider the December meeting to be a Zoom format, and perhaps in this meeting, the next meeting.
I would support going to, just having a special one-item meeting with Zoom, because we have a few COVID cases around the village and the staff. The December meeting, I'm not ready to go back to the, to the isolation or the closures.
I would appreciate Zoom meetings, especially in my condition.
And, and I, I'm with you, Mr. Lamb, I, I don't like them either. I like being here, and I like talking to the public, and I know Joe's gonna make some comments on that as well, Manager Young. We have until December 31st, is, the governor has not amended that order, so beyond December 31st is the end of digital or Zoom meetings, but I'll go ahead, Mr. Young.
Well, we did look into that, and there is a, it would require a state law amendment. The governor can't do it, it has to come from the Senate or the House, and there is a bill to extend it to March 31st, but there's only one person supporting it, and that's been out there. But the other thing with a Zoom meeting, even doing a hybrid, you have to declare a state of emergency, which, if you remember, the council president did that, and then you can do it under the law. So we would need to declare a state of emergency, and we could do hybrid meetings, where if you wanted to come in person or Zoom, they, and Ian's can, can make it, try to make it work as best as possible. We, we hesitated doing it previously, because it's, you know, keeping track of everything, but if it be for one or two meetings, or depending on how things go, we may wanna go that way. But Ian's said today, he would work with me to figure out a better streamlined way to do it, but we would need a declaration of state of emergency.
And, and that's easily done, and I think it, it would be done.
We could do that at the special meeting, for example.
Well, that's, but, but the special meeting would have to be in person to designate, yeah.
Yes.
So I, I would like to propose that we prepare a state of emergency declaration that would be in place until December 31st, and the hybrid meeting, I, I would ask that you look into developing the hybrid meeting, clearly, we're not gonna be able to do that for the next meeting, it's a little more involved, but in the event, over the next three months, that becomes a tool we can use, I think we, we need to have that available if we pull it.
Well, we need to get that law amended to allow that.
And, and that's another thing as well, and I, I honestly believe that Ian Lancing, they're gonna take a look at these numbers, the county homeland security agencies are collecting the data, and it's, it's increasing to the point where it's, I think, going to become very important, so.
The Michigan Misbelieve has their MML live every other week, and that was one of the top items that they did discuss, trying to get that moving, along with the short-term rental item, which there's, they said it could go out at any time, but they did, there was, somebody said there was a
We're kinda wandering off the subject of the meeting, so I, I think
We'll talk about the test.
What I'd like to do is get a date for the special meeting?
Sure. Yeah, great, that'd be wonderful.
If we can look at a date and then
We need 18 hours' notice, so.
I'm available every day this week for one hour after, what time do you guys all get home?
Anytime after 6:00.
Anytime after 6:00.
Would Wednesday work?
Wednesday, December 1st?
At 6:00 PM, or 6:15, or?
That would work for me.
6:15 would be great.
6:15, that we said, sorry?
Yes.
So Wednesday at 6:15, special meeting, for consideration of the asphalt paving contract, anything else you wanna, and declaring a state of emergency?
Declarations, if
Two items.
If that could be drafted and prepared.
Yes, we will.
And could you bring something in with, like a plan for a hybrid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Those, we'll bring, those three items will be on the agenda.
Okay, so I, just to be straight, I don't really support any declarations of states of emergencies until an emergency exists, and, just because someone thinks we need to have an emergency, okay? So is it appropriate, we're gonna have a special meeting for asphalt?
You can, for whatever you want. I mean, right now, there's some council members who would prefer not to meet in person.
Come to the asphalt meeting?
Well, we're talking Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Day after tomorrow.
Yeah, at 6:15.
And I, and I think, then we can have it as an agenda item and a full discussion.
And the council's gotta vote on it.
They gotta vote, and, and whether we go to the state of emergency, they can declare the state of emergency, but whether we go to the Zoom and digital format would be a council decision on Wednesday.
Yeah, I just don't know what the impetus for having a state of emergency is.
Well, you have to have it in order to
The state of emergency is
Required.
Yeah, the state of emergency is required by state law, you cannot go to a digital meeting without a local state of emergency.
What I'm saying is, I, I, I'm not really that fond of the Zoom meetings, especially with these developers making presentations, some very serious issues with the DDA and the local development, I would like to be able to face these people and speak to them directly. So as far as the safety of, of the members of the team, I'm 100% behind all of you, but I have some deep concerns right now with the, you know, what I see, the crisis with our DDA and with these, these five development projects we're gonna run wild through our community, I don't wanna do this stuff remotely if we don't have to, so.
Well, and I think that's a part of the discussion we can have on Wednesday for the, especially the hybrid.
So I would be open to having an agenda item as a discussion of a possible, but, but not necessarily as, as having a vote on it at that point.
Well, I, I think it'll come to a vote, but we can discuss that on Wednesday?
Yeah, it's an agenda item, whether you wanna vote it on or up and down.
And with that, let's move to council comments, Mr. Lamb.
Oh, do we have a motion to set the, do we need a motion to?
He gave me direction to, if you
Yeah, we gave him direction, I don't think we need a, we don't need a motion for a special meeting?
Unless you want one.
I don't believe we do.
I mean, if you wanna do a motion, just for the record, we can.
Okay, looking for a motion to set a special meeting on Wednesday, December 1st at 6:30 PM?
6:15.
Or 6:15?
Yeah.
6:15 PM, live.
Right, for the three items discussed.
For the three items.
Consideration of asphalt contract award, declaring a state of emergency, and hybrid meeting options.
Hybrid meeting options.
This, discussion of declaring a state of emergency?
I'm sorry?
Discussion of declaring a state of emergency?
Well, it's on the agenda for discussion, you decide whether you wanna do it or not. Because there's only one meeting that it'll apply to right now.
That's it?
The December meeting.
We have a motion?
Brad, in second? Jerry, you want a second?
We'll sport.
Jerry? Do you want a roll call?
Uh, sure, we'll do a roll call.
Narsh?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Hobbs?
No.
Okay, Lamb?
No.
Luxinger?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Motion passes forward to
6:15 in person, Wednesday, December 1st, and you'll get the notices out?
Yes, tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, Council?
Okay, moving on, council comments, Mr. Lamb.
If council member Luxinger's concerned, I would be willing to wear a mask at the meeting, if things would be, I would wear a mask and follow protocol and separate a little bit, if that would, would help. My comments tonight are, at the last DDA meeting, I made an informal presentation to them, where I informed them that I believe that their, their TIF does not conform with their plan, and that they've been illegally capturing revenues from the citizens of our fair community since 1985, and that the funds, you know, aren't being distributed appropriately, and I asked them to amend their district in order that they could conform with state law. That would be the first of my, I could, I should probably send you a copy of that presentation. It wasn't included in the minutes of the DDA meeting, and I, that's what I wanted to say, that I had forgotten to annotate, and say, so I'll probably be forwarding to you a, a copy of that presentation, and it's very informal, and I, and I wrote down my notes in a memorandum form, not to a speech, like, so it was kind of rough. I still continue to, as I watch the DDA report and prosper, I think it's wonderful that we have a community-based organization that's gonna help perpetuate our community. I do not think it's the purpose of my tax dollars to promote a party operation, that their primary function is to throw parties, and they increase every year. There were 10 or 12 parties this year, and they're mostly alcoholic parties, which I, I drink alcohol, and, you know, they're hiring staff, support staff, so they can have help throwing their party. I think that the decrease in the DDA's district is not gonna come from the DDA. I don't think that most of the DDA members actually understand their function, or what their job is, or what their duties are. I think this has all grown since 1985, in a very, very small community, with a disproportionate DDA district. So I, I would just like to make you aware, this is, this is what I'm working on, and I'm gonna continue to hammer the DDA until fiscal responsibility and appropriate guidance under the state law occurs. The, my other concern with them was the, Joe, what's the name of that, that program that I keep taking shots at? I didn't bring my notes.
Tax abatement?
No, the
The PUD?
The what?
The PUD, land development?
No.
The National Trust, the Main Street National Trust?
Yeah, the Main Street, you know, there seems to be some mystery, that the Main Street America program is not a federal legal law that is doing, it is a independent, nonprofit political organization designed to bring all the main streets together for whatever purposes. Accreditation through them, acceptance and awards and suchnot, are strictly along the lines of Teacher of the Year, okay? They are not operating underneath any of our state laws, so all the stuff they come up with is just fun, frilly stuff, is my comments. The last comment of the night has to do with the tax abatements, and this is kind of a rude comment, and I was gonna make it earlier during the presentation, but I unfortunately have to wait till now to, to give it to you. I don't understand how a brownfield development authority can be established to take a piece of property where the owners of the property have spent the last 70 years making it worthless by contaminating it, and degrading it, and not maintaining it to the point where it's almost worthless. For instance, the Lumberyard property has a current SEV of $350,000. This property is supposedly, according to the developer's presentation, so the planning commission is seriously horribly contaminated. But somehow, this contaminated horribly property is worth $2.5 million to be sold to the developer. So the people that contaminated the property have got nothing against their wonderful people, I'm just, this, because the situation exists throughout our community, also at the Eman Center project. Why, as a taxpayer, or as a fiscally responsive elected government official, I would recommend a tax abatement and funding, the paying of $2.5 million to people for property they, they contaminated? I don't get it, and I don't understand it. And the Eman Center, we also, this is not gonna be popular for me, the Eman Center, we also have a similar situation, I've been studying this stuff for almost a year, $50,000 is the number that the different people have paid, first the property went back to the state, someone bought it for 50, another guy bought it for 50. So now we have a company, a very nice company, that wants to develop the property, it's got problems, it's got asbestos, it needs abatement. Oh my goodness, the guy that paid $50,000 for the property, he's gonna get $1.2 million for this worthless piece of property that nobody wants to develop? And who's gonna pay for the property? Tax abatement? Our tax dollar? We're supposed to pay this guy $1.2 million for the property that no one wanted to develop? Why doesn't he just give it to the people, and then the people can use that $1.2 million to bait the issues? This is a serious problem, guys, and it's really troubling me. I do not believe this is what the brownfield development laws are all about. I think they're supposed to be taking factory sites that have been abandoned and worthless and taken over by the communities, and then the communities are supposed to take this property, encourage a developer to take the property by using their tax dollars. This is not a funding mechanism to make land developers wealthy. I happen to be a land developer, and I would love to be able to buy a swamp and sell it for a million dollars. And I'm troubled, deeply troubled, and I think you should all be troubled too, so. Thank you for letting me speak once again.
Okay.
Thank you. Miss Leslie?
Couple of things, what's, because we brought up the retaining wall replacement on Park Avenue, Manager Young, what's going on with the Bridge Street retaining wall and Bellevue, the, were they gonna put a railing up?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the Bridge Street project, the contractors in the process, and hopefully it was ordered and hopefully has ordered the steel. The property owners have signed off on their responsibilities. And we're waiting for Fontana to tell us when the steel come in and when it's going to be installed. He'd said it would be between November and March. And that's where we're at at the moment. Last time I talked to him, he was, said that he's in contact with the steel manufacturer on that one. On the.
Bellevue?
The Bellevue guard rail. That contract is, is being executed. They are planning to schedule us, hopefully within the next two weeks, to get it in.
Okay.
So, so that's moving forward.
And then I know Wes is not, is out of commission for a while, but I have some concerns regarding the leaf pickup. The first time it was canceled, specifically on, in our area of Lake Orion, it was canceled the first time. It was supposed to come out and it was never rescheduled. And then because of the snow and everything, it looks like it's not going to, the second time, it's not going to come out.
Well, they're kind of back out. As soon as. I talked to Wes today before he left that if, if the snow melts, they can go out with the blower and get it. If not, they'll take the front end loader and scrape them up.
Okay.
Okay, so he does have a plan.
And when's that going to happen?
Well, when he gets enough crew members there and other projects. Right now, we're short of staff.
Okay.
But it's weather dependent right now.
Okay.
And we're, we're supposedly going to get one or two winters tonight, I believe.
But they're, they, because I, I'm getting this secondhand information, so I might, it might not be correct. But I believe the bag leaf pickup is done December 1st.
Yeah.
So if, so there will be leaf pickup by our DPW?
Yes.
Whether it's scraping it up or sucking it up with the, okay.
And then, and if they do have bag leaves, they can take them to the cemetery.
Right, but I'm asking if our DPW is going to be handling the situation or if our residents need to take care of it themselves.
I'll ask them about the bag leaves. Because right now, we just deal with the ones on the curb, but I'll ask them.
But my understanding, what you just said is the DPW will be either coming around and picking up leaves via their hose?
Yeah.
Or scraping them?
Yeah, I will, I'll double check on the bags to make sure.
No, no, I, hold on, Joe. You're saying that the DPW is going to come around and pick up the leaves?
Yes.
One way or another, one of those two ways?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
And then after that, if there are more leaves, will be, they'll be, the residents will be able to take their bags to the cemetery?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But the, the DPW is going to take care of the leaves first?
Yeah.
Okay.
When we get the roads cleared first.
Okay.
And, and they might pick them up as they go along. I don't know, I'll find out. Okay.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Councilmember Rut?
Yep, my apologies for being late tonight. I was playing a game with my son and, you know, 6:30 instead of 7:30 is just in my mind. And I was like, oh, guess I need to be there. So you said that Wes was, had planned to have interviews with a seasonal worker?
We're still going to have them.
Are these, are you going to do those over Zoom? Or are you going to do them?
I'm doing.
Okay, so those are still going to happen? So there's a possibility we might get some other?
Yes.
Seasonal help in the next.
Right, and we'll look at contract employees if we can find them.
Okay. The Meeks, the Meeks Park Ridge, probably not getting done this year. Are we still waiting on engineering, drawing? The Meeks Park Ridge?
Yes, no, I can process in the process. I'll get an update from them where they're at. Yes.
I think that's all I have. Those two questions, that's it?
Thank you. Councilmember Matheson?
I've got nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Out?
Well, back to the leaves. I just say, let's burn them.
I'm sorry? We need you to.
Let's burn the leaves.
I'm sorry, again?
Let's go back to burning the leaves. Because they're not, they're not getting picked up enough. You know, and the season on picking them up is just too short. And my tree sheds them right now.
Well, we're going to, off the record, we're going to continue to pick up as long as we're able. Okay? Mother nature, we can't predict, just like the snow, you know?
Oak trees don't give off their leaves till around the end of November.
I know.
I just fell off.
Yeah. I know. Yeah, so we work with it.
That's my.
Because we don't want the leaves out there all winter either.
Okay, and we're still going to pursue that. I mean, clearly, we're short staff, but we're still going to be able to pursue that. Okay, good. I think Councilmember Rut.
If I can get one more comment?
Sure.
Just reiterating things to the DDA for the playground stuff. And to, we're going to need lots of help in the spring to build two playgrounds. So it'll probably be over, my guess, over two weekends. So, you know, do a few winter workouts, I guess, inside your basement, your living room. Get ready, you know, because we're going to need a lot of people to help make these playgrounds a reality. And you'll be hearing more about that as springtime comes and the weather thaws and we get everything prepared. So, and to, to bear with us in the spring when things look like a mess initially at some of the parks when we are getting geared up to make some improvements.
Mr. Young, when we get that date from Parks and Rec, when we know those dates, can you please have that put up on our website?
Which dates again? No, I'm sorry.
These, they're yet to be determined dates?
The build days.
Community build, oh, of course.
When we have those dates, as soon as we get those dates, we could put them up. And we'll kind of push those and try to get as community support. And I think it's a great way to.
Right.
To put it together. I got a couple of those power drivers and I, I got a couple of boys I can drag out, so.
Good.
But the more support we can get, the better. And get the war gloves on and save some tax dollars and. Thank you. My comments tonight are just, I, I would like to consider, if you could have a conversation with Wes, maybe you already have, if he could zoom in to those interviews.
Yeah.
I think Wes would like to be a part of that.
We will.
Might as well be max headroom is the best kind of, you know, a little two-dimensional. But I think he'd like to be a part of that interview. And then I encourage everybody, the parade
Oh, yeah.
of the year is about to happen. The Parade Committee has done a phenomenal job year after year. I have been blessed to be in 38 of those parades and a part of those. This is going to be my first parade that I have not participated in in 39 years. So I'm going to watch the parade with everyone else and I hope everybody comes downtown. It's such a wonderful time. Take precautions as folks, you know, see fit[1639.24]